We don't know why it wasn't working because I guess.
Were you just kidding or were you?
Well, we'll give it one.
Good evening, everyone. We're gonna start this evening's meeting with our opening and my salute by Director Rachel Engler. Hello. Most of you know, well, many of you know, that I am a piano teacher and a cello teacher. So, a couple of years ago, when one of my students told me about the piano guys and about this, some guys that work together and they videotape the performances in strange places, sometimes on the side of the cliff, sometimes on the back of a train. But they usually have a piano and a cello, but one time, they took five guys and did something really decor with the piano. So, that's what we're gonna watch tonight, and while you're watching, be thinking about some lessons that we might be able to learn from. Can't see it well, turn the lights on. Well, what makes a district beautiful? So, there are some lessons we can learn from piano guys for Northern Lebanon School District. First of all, thinking outside the box can produce unique music. Collaboration and teamwork are essential for a successful and beautiful song. The song and the team are promoting. When the song is completed, the team won, not one individual. Every person has a different role, a unique place, and everyone is valued. Everyone had a great time making music together, and I think you can tell that. The observer and listener is inspired, enriched, and changed. And my hope is that is what is going to happen for Northern Lebanon School District. Please join me for a moment of silence. For the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Too late. Oh, I see now we're spots on my paper. But seriously, thank you very much, Rachel, for bringing that to our attention. So, at this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mary, did you check to see if everybody's here? Last time, the board met in executive session on April 14th, 2015, before the regular meeting to discuss legal issues. The board met in executive session immediately following the April 14th, 2015 meeting to discuss contractual issues. The board met in executive session immediately following the May 5th, 2015 committee meetings to discuss personnel and contractual issues. And lastly, the board will be meeting this evening in executive session immediately following this meeting to discuss personnel and contractual issues. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from April 7th and April 14th. Moving second. All those who approve of that motion say aye. Opposed, say no. Moving on to adoption of the agenda. Motion on the floor to accept the agenda as presented this evening on the paper. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say no. So, I'd like to move on to administrative reports. We'll start first with Mr. Josh Keener.
Good evening, everyone. For the head school report, we have three parts. The first part is going to be jumping ahead in the agenda a little bit to take this opportunity to formally invite each of you to our commencement ceremony, which is Wednesday, June 3rd at 7:30 PM. We ask you to arrive at about 7:05 so we can get to the process on correctly. So, that's part one. The second part is going to be, as a follow-up to, something that was requested way back from the board of school directors regarding the trip that was approved to Costa Rica. Mrs. Snyder and some of our students have put together a presentation about some of the neat and exciting things that they did on their trip. And then finally, the third part will be from Mrs. Opresta and Ms. Nash regarding the mini-thon that we're very excited to have at the high school coming on Friday. So, this time, I'm asking Mrs. Snyder to come up.
Good evening. On behalf of our student group of 42 travelers, I would like to extend to you our sincere thanks for allowing us the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to travel to Costa Rica just two months ago. I would like to begin by recognizing Mrs. Gretchen Stoddard, whose passion for language and learning has driven her to pour her time and resources into our Spanish program. She has been a trailblazer for many years, and this trip would not have been possible without her support and guidance. Would you recognize her, please? It has been our experience that students who travel learn lessons that cannot be taught within the four walls of a classroom, and many of those students go on to study, live, or teach abroad at some point in their lives. And even those who settle down nearby, like myself, will tell you that they are forever changed by their travels. While in Costa Rica, our students kept travel journals where they recorded their thoughts and reflections. One of the assignments was to write a haiku poem, and they did an amazing job of sharing the sights, sounds, and emotions of the trip. I would like to share a few of these with you now, after which, I will invite some of our students to share their thoughts about this trip. So, here's some haikus from the journals. Water comes falling over the big rocks below, cooling the hot air. High up in the trees, a monkey jumps before me, eating luscious fruit. Cool wind through my hair, rolling green hills beneath me, beauty all around. Walking through downtown, I met a lonely doggy, I met my best friend. Jumping on the rocks, clear water falls from above, the light it shines through. The volcano was dramatic, smelled of sulfur, photogenic, wow. With a bird's eye view, I'm zipping over the trees, I wish I had wings. Sitting on a beach, sand falling between my toes, relaxing and calm. Wild horseback riding, a toucan up in a tree, a magnificent bird. See all the children, joyful for what we give them, playful and grateful. Walk up to the edge, hear the roar of the waters pierce the green landscape. Green, green on all sides, animals sleep in the heat, freaks run through all day. Shooting through the sky, higher than the trees and ground, nothing can stop me. In a canopy way above the pretty trees, this is home to me.
During Costa Rica, we went to visit an elementary school, and it actually was a big eye-opener to me to see how much that our school and myself take for granted. When I got there, I was actually surprised to see how little they had and how happy they were. Some people, when they come to NL, we don't understand how easy we have it and all the amazing things we have every day, when they're struggling to have AC. So, we actually got enough money together to donate to our ceiling fans, and I was lucky enough to present that to the children in Spanish, so I did get to use enough Spanish there, and I learned a lot more things. And I realized that every day, I have taken so much for granted that I never really understood that I had. So, the Costa Rica trip was actually a life-changing experience, and it made me realize that the things that we have every day, they don't have it over there. So, we should not take everything for granted, and we should thank them for what we have.
The trip, it has definitely made me more aware of the many different people and things that happen around our world. It has, it has to the extent of knowing that there is more to this world than little Pennsylvania. It exceeded my expectations, and it was amazing experience, something that I will never forget. It was so beautiful and more than I could ever imagine. I would have never guessed that I placed a small Costa Rica could have changed my outlook on so many things in life and just the beauty of the land.
I would like to thank everyone who made that trip possible. It is very educational, and it's a great trip for all of us too. As a student in broadcast journalism, I put together a short clip for y'all to watch. The back Costa Rica trip is very brief, so you're gonna get a short feel of what we all got to experience. It was such a great experience, and I hope this video helps you see a little insight of what we all got to see and the great views and everything. On our first day in Costa Rica, we attended the Envio Park. Well, at the Envio Park, we learned about Costa Rica's natural wildlife and their natural habitats. There was tour guides there to take us through and see just everything about the natural habitat. After visiting the Envio Park, we eventually interlaid to see the Palos Machan. The Palos Machan is an active volcano, and it is a beautiful sight to see. We also got to see an inactive volcano that is now active with water and beautiful plants and trees around it. On our second day, we attended the school. Prior to the school, we were able to present the children with bands that they're able to put in their classrooms so they can have more nursery relationship. We also, each of the students had a bag with gifts that they were able to give to their assigned students and hang out with all day and play games and just have fun. Also, throughout the school, we helped them paint a wall that was on the outer rim of their school. It was great to interact with the kids while doing this. After hiking over 400 stairs to get down to the waterfall, we were able to swim and hump a ton with our friends, and then after that, we had to hike 400 stairs back up to the top to get back on the bus. After the waterfall, we went kayaking. Kayaking was such a fun experience. We were able to kayak over to a swimming pool and hit a ball with our kayaks and get swimming. After a long day, we were able to enjoy the hot springs. They had different slides and all different type of hot springs with different kinds of water. Oh, it smells of bourbon. We were able to stop at a rest stop. In here, there was a man who had a sugarcane field, and we were able to process the natural sugar juices and drink it and get over a field for it. Horseback riding in Costa Rica was a while ago. P'jordiosen joined it greatly, and it was a nice experience to be able to ride home countryside Costa Rica horseback. On a touring forest, we were able to see what the natural life in a jungle would look like in Costa Rica. With Montserrat in reserve, we went playing trees in a field to help make the environment better. The camping tour tram was a lot of fun. We were able to take a tram up into the woods and see down into the rainforest. It was a pretty neat experience for all of us. After the camping tour, we did another tour where we were able to see more wildlife and smell different herbs and spices that are naturally grown in Costa Rica. On our second tour of stay, we went to Manuel and Tami Park. This is where we went to the beach. In order for us to get to the beach, we had to hike 45 minutes. The beach was beautiful. The water was crystal clear, and it is such a beautiful sight. While keeping our clothes hanging on trees, there were raccoons that ended up getting into one of our bags. On our last day, we went on a crocodile tour. On the crocodile tour, we saw multiple crocodiles, including two big ones, one looking like a python. We actually were able to get right up close next to Tyson, and he actually started to go to the water, and everybody started to paint it. Searching some market, though, stopped that on our way back to San Antonio. All the art you're seeing in this clip is all hand painted. Everything there is hand painted, but then you're working in the back on the outside of the market. Just being around the lifestyle of Costa Ricans, that they have such a positive aspect on my feet. I go to their school, I go to my friend.
This little girl, Maria, and she is really nice and cute, and I'm getting a couple of her.
I liked horseback riding and visiting the children and talking to them. And, yeah, I just really, kids are my favorite part of basketball.
Was going to the beach and the school, I think, was that what you said? Especially get elevation, it's really high, and I can't breathe.
Highlight of my trip was visiting the school and eating.
Buravida.
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 Hola, hola.
That was a very good trip.
Yeah, it was.
We get to cut that shirt off and get in the shower and stuff.
Are the fun highlights on there too?
They're next.
Are they up there?
Hi. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Normally, I just talk in front of young people, not all these adult people. I am here to encompass and represent. I teach English at the high school, and I'm so honored to be here to talk about our first-ever mini-thon. I'm here with Kelsey Nash, one of our other advisors, and three of our girls who've been so helpful in helping us with this mini-thon. I'm here with Kelsey Nash, one of our other advisors and three of our girls who've been so helpful in helping us with this mini-thon. So how our mini-thon got started? The first is to point out that most schools in the area plan their mini-thon in one school year. We started planning our mini-thon the second week of March. Because Jocelyn came to see me and she said, "Listen, I went to Angelo's mini-thon and it was really awesome. We can do better." Let's beat Angelo. I'm so inspired. They help so many people. What can we do? We need unity in our school. How can we do better? Well, they know me. We know I'll push around. I'm like, "Sure, sure, let's do it, let's do it." So they go to Costa Rica, they come back, we get started. Tuesdays, Thursdays, 6:30 in the morning after school, they are there fundraising, getting sponsors, getting donations of food, planning all sorts of fundraisers. I'm just so proud of them. We have our mini-thon on Friday. We had, what was our day? Tacky Tourist Day. So make sure you check our Instagram. Put our Instagram out there. Check our Instagram to see our tacky tourist photos. I have Ms. Nash here and she's gonna tell you about some of our fundraising that we've done over the past two months.
Okay, so we began, for the thon, we had a kickoff assembly April 15th. We had a representative come from the Four Diamonds Fund to start and the school motivated and we just had a huge outpouring of, "How can we do thon?" from the kids, from parents, from faculty members. Everybody's been really great and supportive. We set our goal for the thon. We started small at $5,000. I will hint that we are doing very well. We don't want to give away our final number yet because the kids are really looking forward to that. So Saturday at 6 o'clock in the morning, we will be revealing our final number. So please follow us on Twitter, Instagram to look for our mail. To raise money, we, a lot of the kids set up donor drives. Donor drives are through the Four Diamonds Fund is online. So anybody can go to the Four Diamonds website and find Northern Lebanon and sponsor a student. Our kids were very active in the community. We got a lot of business sponsors and donorships. We had our first ever Spring Flame at the high school and it was a neon theme and it was a huge success with our bake sale. The wrestlers helped us at their tournament with selling our leftover baked goods from the Spring Flame. During lunches, we've been selling exercise sweatpants and rubber bracelets and we made a killing off of the kids. They were sporting those for the past two weeks. Last Tuesday, a week ago, we had a Texans Roadhouse night and people came in from the community with our flyer and we had a collection jar and people were just dumping money in it for us. We also had some donations from the chorus department and our biggest one, we have a Hreschko's Chicken Barbecue that we sold, a car wash, and we had dress down days past Friday for the faculty members. So this week, we are doing our Thon Spirit Week in the high school. Yesterday was Decade's Day, so we saw a lot of 70s and 80s. Today, we had tacky tours Tuesday. Lots of placket hats, cargo shorts, sandals and socks and fanny packs. Tomorrow is our Penn State Day to honor Penn State because they're the ones that started mini-thon. Thursday is Triplet to stomp out cancer with three times the force. And Friday is our superhero day for our thon theme, the show which is superheroes. We are here tonight to cordially invite everybody along with the school board to our community night on Friday. From 5 to 7 at the high school. A lot of the clubs have set up different booths geared towards the elementary age kids. We will also be having Hreschko's Chicken Barbecue. A lot of the students did a pre-sale, but they are bringing extra for a first come, first served. The French fry stand will be there. We're having cotton candy and much more. So we would really love to see you guys out there to support our kids in their first ever mini-thon and at their community night, which they are very excited about. Thank you guys for your support. We greatly appreciate it.
Go right ahead. I was gonna thank you for a wonderful presentation and the same thing goes to you, Senora Snyder. There you went, mentioned. Thank you very much. Thank you students very much. Good, good presentations, good stuff. And this takes us to David Yelich.
Good evening. As most of you know, Holly Plummer is a physical education slash health teacher in the middle school. And one thing that I'm just always impressed with her is how she takes her classroom content and expands it into the community. Over the years, I've been there 11, over 11 years now and I've just seen her over and over again. She's very concerned not only her students, but of their families also in maintaining good health. And I think that that's part of what made her a state finalist Teacher of the Year a year ago. It's just how she's so involved in the community. Tonight, she's gonna present two things that she's working on. One is a 10,000 Tables Grant and also a 5K Trailblazer Community Event. That's all she's gonna present.
Well, I have some really nervous friends and then just some nervous friends. So I'm gonna let my really nervous seventh grader go first.
Hello, I'm Alfie Leder. I'm a seventh grader at Northern Lebanon Middle School. And this year, Miss Plummer has started a new project because we have received an extraordinary $5,000 grant. So we thought why not use this one for the community? And we're also trying to generate only 5K around the walking trail and we found out in four weeks. We're hoping to raise enough money to eventually have, to eventually make enough money to buy more pieces of equipment for next year. We wanted to showcase the new pieces of work and equipment that we've recently placed on our walking trail around the school. I'd like to give you a sneak peek at the few pieces we've prepared so far. These are just a few. We can, we can afford due to our budget. We are planning to have many more, but it's all said and done.
So we're gonna flip through these. These are now in the ground along the walking trail. That's a chest press machine that's on hydraulics. We also have pull-up, push-up, dip bar, and a squat machine.
Our main goal is to make this community healthy. With the new equipment, there's no reason why it can't be cheap. The equipment is completely free and they're different settings, so a variety of people can use them. The equipment we have pictured are not the only ones. We have more on the way and Mrs. Plummer has applied for another brand. So hopefully you can purchase even more. Our other goal is to make the 5K a little even. We need more people to register to make their run a success. We're looking for some of you guys to sign up. If you have any interest, you can contact Mrs. Plummer for your information. The event is currently scheduled for May 29th. Please be sure to take a look.
This is the Nasco Nerds launch.
Good evening. My name is Nathaniel Lum and I'm here to tell you just how important the 10,000 Tables Initiative has been to our school. In case you do not know what this initiative is, this had students sign a pledge so that they would eat at least one meal a week with their family. Every middle school student was asked to sign the pledge. Because of the volume of the students who pledged, we were, we won one of the top three prizes in this initiative. The 10,000 Tables originated in Pittsburgh where there are really large schools that could have beat us 10 times over. Yet our small school won. And that says something about us. It says how we are focused around family and how we want change to happen, starting in our homes. And this is one of the reasons why this initiative is so important. Now, not only to me, but to the entire school as well. Being able to win this initiative has given us $5,000 to spend on much-needed equipment for the school, but for the entire community to use. We purchased three pieces of equipment, workout equipment for the mall trail and we plan on adding more. These purchases demonstrate just how important community is, community and family is to the school. This means a lot to me, that we are focusing around community and not just ourselves. One of the most important parts of signing this pledge is having students realize that they should spend time with family, even if it is just for a few meals. A few days ago, to see how the initiative has affected them. I asked a few basic questions such as, "How much time do you spend with your family?" "Where do you spend most of your family time at?" And has pledging with, to you with your family, major interactive and more? While the national average for middle school students spending time with their family is 27 minutes, our time was closer to three hours. That is a huge difference compared to other schools in our nation. When asked where the most time spent with the family is, a majority of them say the dining room because of meals eaten together. Then on my final question, when asked if 10,000 Tables has affected them in some way, a vast majority told me, "Have started eating with their families and enjoying it too," all because of this initiative. I just wanna, I just wanna thank Mrs. Plummer for getting our school involved and encouraging us to spend more time with our family together. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rayanne Blessing. I'm 14 years old and in the eighth grade at Northern Lebanon Middle School. Mrs. Plummer has asked me to talk to you about the fitness program. We are very privileged to have all the gym equipment that we have. Mrs. Plummer, along with many other N L teachers and students, have worked hard to get the new equipment that we have. We have received many grants to help us get to where we are today. The Hammer Foundation gave us $7,000 to purchase 44 mountain bikes. They've also given us $50,000, which we have used to get boxing bags and street strikers. We have, we have received donations from our new, for our new mall trail fitness equipment. We are holding a 5K run slash walk event to help, to help raise money to buy more equipment for the trail. We have received, we have received $92,747 so far in grant money. Our goal is to get $100,000. Our middle school held a nutrition night where over 300 people attended. Several local businesses joined us on that night. We were able to try new foods and learn more about living a healthy lifestyle. How do we inspire the world to fitness? To quote the Health and Fitness Association, "Be strong, enjoy what you do, practice patience, stay positive, teach how and the why. Challenge yourself, drink big, love, breathe, lead, change. Continue learning, be kind, be courageous, empower others. Lead by example, try something new, be mindful, and never give up."
Folks, I started writing grants a few years ago and have accumulated $92,000, which is huge for our school. And the community part of that is, we're going to do a 5K, a wellness 5K. And we have a little superhero run ahead of time. I'll fix your nephew signed up, but I'm waiting for the rest of you. So I hope to get some more. May 29th, I hope to see you out there, even if it's just to cheer everybody on. We did purchase the equipment and that is going to allow people in our community to use the trail for cardio, but then also get that muscular fitness part of it. So we do have another squat machine. We have a leg press coming and we're hoping to see more and more people out there using that. So that, that's the 5K event. The 10,000 Tables was, I totally forgot about it from the beginning of the year. Things happen and life is crazy and so Mr. Gray and I, we challenged the kids to, you know, do this. To sign up, take the pledge, eat with your family, you know, communicate, sit down, look at their eyes, not do this. And we had so many kids sign up that we were one of the top three. Now, just to back up, Mr. Gray and I challenged them and as I was explaining this to them, I'm thinking, "Oh my gosh, I need something to, you know, an incentive." So I said, "Hey, if we're one of the top three, Mr. Gray and I are gonna come to your house and cook meat for you." Now, my husband will attest I can burn toast, but we have three students and their parents that will be coming in and cooking a big, healthy meal for them. So at the end of May, we have a sixth grader, seventh grader, and eighth grader that we will be heading into. And we never thought that we would win, hence me saying that. So we're kind of excited and the parents are excited and we're excited to do a lot of fun things for the community. So thank you very much. Do you have any questions? Any questions about the registration form? Please see me. Thank you. Is Tim Snyder, Paul, or one of those guys here at Knives? They're all over here. Well, I, I do have something for them and it's a lot of calories because they worked really hard to get all of that equipment in, in a timely fashion. So I'll give it to them tomorrow. Can you get to you, you need it. So I do want to also acknowledge Sue Stover here at Lyttle Elementary, if you see Sue. She takes all of the grants and I give her my phys ed lingo and she shimmers it to make it sound very eloquent. So I believe she's part of the reason why we're getting a lot of these grants too. So thank you. Mrs. Plummer, you've never failed to impress this board and once again, you have gone above and beyond and done it again. Now, I have a question for the audience sitting out there because that sure sounded like she was throwing down a challenge to us. How many of you have used the trail? Put your hands up higher. How many of you by May 29th are gonna have checked out this trail? You don't have to wear the superhero thing, I don't think, but I think she, I heard a challenge and I think we all need to get out there and be supporting the project. And once again, thank you and thank you very much for our presenters too. Mr. Arts.
President Warren, I did hear a rumor that you're coming as captain.
You know, if you can buy a leg for a big enough for me, maybe I'll do that.
I don't know what to say. I'm done. No, tonight I have Coach Opresta with us and some of the members of the boys' track and field team for their third year in a row. They are section champions and undefeated in the section. So Coach Opresta and the boys' track and field team whoever is here. Thank you, Mr. Arts, and thank you Board of Directors. I would also like to start by thanking the community for using the mall trail more. I will warn you, if my guys come by running their 5K race, they're usually hustling pretty quick. So please shoot them out of their way and just slow them down a little bit. Make them work for it. It's good for them. I would like to thank not only the Board of Directors, the superintendent, of course, Dr. Bell, and our athletic director, Mr. Arts. I'd also like to thank my coaching staff. It has been an amazing season again for the third year in a row. Undefeated section champions, qualifying kids for leagues, districts after this weekend, hopefully states. But realistically, it's all about the athletes. The young men you see behind me have done an outstanding job this season. The accumulation of many years, hours, weeks worth of work every season of the year. And I'm incredibly proud that they are now 22 and O since our last loss three years ago, four seasons officially now. So it's a wonderful time to play. Coach Dane, do you mind standing up, sir? Dane D'Angelo is one of my assistants. He's done an amazing job and he is the captain. I think we've tamed it in odds-on favorites that we would do very well within our section. Our section is schools of about our size and we honestly had to pick up the challenge a little bit. There's 150 points in a track meet because of the events. And Dane issued a challenge to these boys and they stepped up of scoring more than 100 points out of the 150 every season. And it came out of Donegal. The end of the season, which is unusual for us, usually finish with an elbow, but it was Donegal this year. And 103 to 47, we did score over 100 points in every one of our We did score over 100 points in every one of our section pool meets, which is a humongous achievement. And in terms of our upper level competition for elite athletes, we did go down to Central York High School, and against Central Dalton East, against Hershey, against Mannheim, these big schools that usually clean up on us pretty well. We came away the overall champions of White Rose Invitational. That's an incredible achievement, it's the second time in three years that we've had that chance to win. And we'll be totally honest, the Milton Hershey coach is a very big man, and he had both the girls' trophy and our boys' trophy under both arms. And I had to literally pull it away from him because he thought there was no way a school our size would bring athletes like these. We had to convince him on the computer scoring program that we had actually won a meet, and I had to take our trophy away from him and bring it back to the boys. So he left it. It was a risk I ran. He's a big man. So a big round of applause for the boys, please.
We're going to ask you to introduce yourselves also, just might as well have said yes in one of the seats.
Hello, I'm Don McTrater. Just going to say, this season was very fun. Something Coach Walbun told me, winning's fun, which is why this track season and past track season were fun. And because of that, we've had a lot more athletes come out, which improved our program. Three years ago, we would never expect to win or score 100 points in every single meet. Now we expect it, just because we have a lot more people coming out. And on a personal note, despite an injury, I had to study back four weeks, still got the school record. In order for me to go to the States, I'm going to have to improve the school record by three inches.
I came in late to sports in high school, and I honestly would say I never really depended to be on the track team. I felt really welcomed by our track program, let alone any program at the school. It was very, it was a lot fun, and I would miss any other in the world. And I feel really excited, so we're down.
Hello, I'm Tyler McPeters, I run distance for the team, and I just would like to thank our coaches very much for all that they put into this, Coach DeAngelis and Coach Opresta for sending you the opportunity they gave us, and thank you all.
Hi, I'm Tyler Whitman, and, well, I've been doing this for quite some time now, since 7th grade, and track is, they're my family, and that's why we do so well, because we run together as a team and compete together as a company, and that's why we've been undefeated for three years. Thank you.
I'm Damian DeAngelis, I'm a junior, and ever here that I've been on the track team, we've gone undefeated, and that really means something to me, and I'd like to keep that going, unmotivating the guys that are left on the team, and thanking the guys that have been making it possible so far.
I'm Dante DeAngelis. I'm a freshman this year, so it's my first time being part of the high school track team. It's been a great experience being with real varsity athletes that have dedicated their time and effort in order for us to be section champions.
You have to apologize, Tyler and I ran about five miles before we came near our practice, and then we went straight from there to the elementary track meet, which was on the track this evening, and I do see some of the contestants here this evening. I want to give you guys a big wave, because you are the future of this program, and starting with the elementary world and moving up to junior high, and eventually seeing a lot of these 5Ks and fun runs and superhero things. The program is only growing because of that, and the future for our program, it's a little scary to the rest of our competitors. It looks greater now. We're going to graduate a ton of seniors, but we have as much talent as any year that I've coached so far. So I'm hoping I see you guys next year. Same time, same place, same championship. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Coach Opresta and Coach DeAngelis, and thank you, this fine group of young men, great public speakers, thank you for talking to us today. That should take care of all of our administrative reports, so it's now time to move on to special presentations. First, I'd like to announce that the High School Students of the Month for May are Emily Heilinger and Justin Medelio. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Clubs, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting at the Lions Club. The Middle School Student of the Month for May is Brooke Grady, and for the month of June is Kevin, I practiced this and now I'm going to blow it, Pig Arida. This award is sponsored by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. And at this time, we said we were going to be recognizing at their respective Lions Clubs and Rotary Clubs, but this is the night where we get to honor them here this evening. So we're going to be recognizing all of the middle school and the high school students of the month for the 2014-2015 school year. I'm assuming you're looking at me saying we're starting with middle school?
Yes.
I'm not as tall as this school case. Okay, it's truly my privilege to recognize tonight all of the students of the month for the school year in the middle school, and I'll start by, as you come up, receive your certificate, and then if you could just stand up in a line here, I would appreciate that. So first one, September, Mark Tinto.
And we welcome applause.
February, Mackenzie Geissman. May, Brooke Grady. Who was cool from softball, Dan Fries. And for June, Kevin Higaray. Okay, if you could just have a round of applause for all of them. If you could go out in the hallway, I believe, to get your picture taken.
Okay, now it's my privilege to introduce the high school students of the month. We have two students each month, so we're going to have a few more to make. First student is Natalie Bevins. And Justin Medew. We have one more round of applause for all of the students.
You can tell everybody who has had ags at class, because my hand hurts now, but sincerest congratulations, you guys have done, I think you guys have done such a fine job throughout your school years, and you were rewarded well. All right, I think it's time to move on to our student board representatives report. Haley Humble?
Some of the upcoming and current events are the mini-thons Mrs. Opresta said, which the thon itself is on Friday and the community night, and the spirit days this week as she mentioned. The iField trip to the Phillies is this Thursday. The senior class trip is coming up, and FBLA currently is doing mock interviews with the faculty as I mentioned in the last meeting. Some past events, the talent show that was today, and everybody did a nice job. The chorus concert, which was well enjoyed and had a good turnout. The art students enjoyed and learned a lot from their trip to Newark, and prom was a big success, and the gymers did a really nice job.
Thank you very much, Haley. And now it's time to move on to the public input session. I don't have a few comments to make before we start the public input session. First of all, there might be some gossip out there, because Channel 8 was at my farm tonight. It was in no and either enough of cars, going by beeping, waving, and everything else. The school was not any topic of discussion at all. It had something totally, totally else to do with it, but I'm sure if my mother-in-law is smart enough to wave, and she can see with binoculars, that some of the rest of you might have had questions too. So I just want to assure you that it had nothing at all to do with the school. The second thing I'd like to say about the public meetings is that I did go to the president's workshop, you might have heard me mention this last week, that was put on by the Pennsylvania School Board Association, and I did learn some things about public input session. And there's some of you that were there last week, or I'm sorry, last month, and things didn't run quite as smoothly as I think it could have and should have. So what I'm asking for this evening is respect for anybody that's speaking tonight, respect for the person that's sitting next to you. You know, you may not like what that speaker's saying, you may not like the viewpoint of the member that's sitting next to you. This is a public input session. And having said that, a public meeting means that we hold our meetings here in the public, and the public is very, very important to us. It does not mean that the public should dominate and control the meeting, it just means we are, we need, it's our responsibility, and we want to hear from all of you. We truly, truly want, we listen to you, but please don't take advantage of the situation of being allowed to speak in front of us. And last time, we were a little bit too generous with the amount of time that we were giving some of the public to speak, and that was my fault, it's not your fault, I was not paying attention close enough to the time. We do need a whole more five-minute time period this evening that will be granted to all the speakers, because I believe it's either eight or nine, and we do have some important things to discuss tonight, like the budget, and if I were you, I would want us to be discussing the budget when we're wide awake and not when it's much later in the evening, because it's a very important topic and we all need to be paying very close attention. Having said all that, I don't want to take away from the time that people aren't here to speak. And our first one up will be Carol Beaker, please.
Hi, my name's Carol Beaker, and I believe I talked to almost everybody on the school board. I've lived in Jonestown, 20, plenty of drive, since 1987, and I'm surviving three children that went to the school. I can say I wrote my speech, which was more than five minutes, and so I'm just going to wing it here. I can say that my children were all very different. I have one that was, two that were really wonderful students, one that was not, and I can say that Northern Lebanon work with the children. They have wonderful, wonderful teachers, they have wonderful, wonderful coaches, and they have worked hard. I am so sorry for where we are right now with the school board and the trust issues that we have with the superintendent and our school board system, and I have given a lot of positive feedback and I have given some negative feedback. I just feel that we need to see, and I'm trying to let go of the negative and the things that have happened, because my son has been coming to all of these school board meetings, and I'm very proud of him. I am very saddened that he saw the display of what we called as an apology by Mr. Houck. However, I guess I need to look at, this is another life lesson for my 17-year-old. He needs to learn that not all people in high places are doing positive things. We've seen that from the presidency to the president of our school board here in Northern Lebanon. I just look at, we need to focus on the positive and the good within this school system and grow from there. I didn't do too much research on it, I would like to, but I know that there's a certification for school boards. I would love to hear that our school board gets back onto a certification program and the education to offer all that can be available. I look at the firegrom of Gary Burchett, and I need to try to let go of that, but the inspiration that that man has given to our children. I look at Mr. and Mrs. Stoddard, how they touched the lives of my son that graduated in 2007. in 2007. Mrs. Stoddard was a mentor of my daughter, who was socially challenged, and now she's living in China from her experiences with Mrs. Stoddard and her Costa Rica trip here at Northern Lebanon. So we have a small community that we really can look at the positive for and, and not all the negative. I'm just so saddened to still have David Houck on our school board. I wanna always bring out the positive, and I heard him yelling at a basketball game, and I was so embarrassed, because he was yelling at a kid with the same name as my kid. And my kids are, somebody want me off the court? I'm just playing basketball, I'm having fun, I'm a junior, you know? This is my game, my love. And then to find out that it was the president of the school board mentor, um, school board was just disheartening. And I think to get trust back, we need to just address, can our community get trust back with David Houck sitting on this school board? I want Isaac to reach out to the new coach, I want him to find leadership, and he has done that, he has made me proud. I want Team Effort, I think that, that music, the piano on Team Effort was just so positive. And our coaches and our sports and our music have done that. I, I just, I was just at the music concert, and that was just absolutely wonderful. And I know that Mr. Innocent and Mrs. Masser are spread so thin, and they've just done a wonderful, wonderful job. I've survived bubbles at Northern Lebanon, and the issues were addressed. My daughter had thirty kids in a first grade class. I kind of lived in Gary Messinger's office at the time, being an advocate for my kids, but my, my needs were met. My IPs, IPs were carried through in a positive manner back in the day. I have not had an IP for years since my first two. But I guess the things that I, I'm concerned is, when Dr., when Boucher was fired, yes, Dr. Bell fielded my phone calls, but I'm just appalled, like, to see the amount of money that he's making, that he is making, when I've been sitting in the school board office, hearing that we lived in a repressed community, in a poor community. I felt I lived in a rich community. I have wonderful teachers, I have wonderful neighbors and community.
Thon.
That pull together. And for us to have Dr. Bell pay the amount of money that he has paid in a school board that seems to support it.
Please wrap it up, we have a lot more to do. Thank you. And it's already been really tough on the thon, but like I said, we've got, got quite a few to go for you tonight. Gretchen Stoddard, please.
Hello, my name is Gretchen Stoddard. I teach Spanish at the high school, and I'm not a resident of Northern Lebanon, but I'm here for a professional concern tonight. I'm sure that in the midst of all this high sentiment, you've wondered why you haven't heard from any of the teachers. I believe that it is because of fear and retaliation. Being in the district thirty-five years, my classroom is a constant thoroughfare for teachers in and out, talking to me from my playing period over my life to the beginning of the day and at the end of the day. Had a lot of nice, heartfelt, serious conversations with my peers and my colleagues. In fact, I would not be here, talking to you right now about this, if my own career, a very fulfilling one, were not the ending of fifteen days. If you have noticed, our presence is growing. Our presence is our voice. We may not stand at this podium and express our concerns, so I'm making a respectful suggestion. When we must make a decision, don't mistake our silence as agreement or complacency. Don't hear just one side of the story. Visit us, investigate, ask questions, come to us, come to the teachers, because I'm pretty sure that they won't come here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gretchen. Beth Peckman?
My name is Beth Peckman, and I live in Jonestown. And I want to thank you, Mrs. Stoddard, I'm so proud of you for speaking out. Thank you. Since last week's meet, I'm about five too. Since last week's meeting, there has been little on my mind besides the proposed budget. When Mrs. Sell asked why there hadn't been more discussion on the budget, Mr. Lum said there are reasons why this hadn't been discussed. I'd like to ask you, Mr. Lum, were you insinuating that the community members, speaking at the board meetings, prevented the board from focusing on the budget? Were you unable to discuss the budget at committee meetings? How much longer will members of the community be blamed and criticized by members of this Then Mr. Houck brings a list of things he would like to be considered for the budget. I agree with joining the school board assoc-, sorry, association, and additional attorney fees. This board needs to be educated when making decisions for the district. I worry we cannot afford some of the items discussed by Mr. Houck. I was very nervous to hear Mr. Houck discuss other schools putting possible money from Governor Wolf into the budget. I was at the meeting when Russ Diamond said, "Don't count on that money yet." I called his office this week to see if anything changed. There aren't any changes. We won't know until they pass the budget, hopefully in the end of June. How can you run a budget hoping money will count in? Our district cannot take that chance. I was glad to hear Dr. Martel sharing his concerns about building a reserve. I appreciate you thinking about the long-term health of the district and not wanting to repeat the mistakes of the past. And Mr. Arnold, thank you for thinking of the taxpayers and reminding everyone of the burden to taxpayers over recent years. Mr. Gray reminded us that the current state of our finances is due to mistakes of previous boards. As hard as it is to say, Mrs. Sell and Mrs. England acknowledge that there may be some great proposals for additional staff and services, but we may not be able to afford all of them. Last week showed me there must be a balance. It seems we can afford some additions added back, we can have less of an increase in taxes, and have some money to put in our reserve. I am just worried about all of the proposals between Dr. Bell and Mr. Houck. Our district is in desperate need of fiscal responsibility. The members of this board need to take more time to review this budget. I urge you to look long and hard at all the details. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Beth. Rachel Sekela?
Uh, Rachel Sekela, I have a Lebanon address. I'm a little emotional after listening to Mrs. Stoddard, because that's what I've been fighting for. I don't want to do this. I don't want to have to take time away from my children just to ensure accountability at our district. I don't. This isn't some vendetta that I struck out against because somebody was making a lot of money and I was jealous. I'm not. What I feel like is our district has been in a drought, and you've been watering the grass. The leadership in the Northern Lebanon School District is very poor. Administration uses policies to harass and intimidate teachers. A recent lawsuit against the school district brought by a former teacher is a prime example of the lack of professional discipline. The complaint goes through stride and detail and numerous violations of policies that created a hostile working environment for a veteran teacher. It was clear that the individual was being singled out. The question is, what was the reason she was being singled out? Did the school board investigate? Was anyone in administration held accountable for these blatant failures? This is not micromanaging. A school board is there to provide leadership and oversight of the school district's curriculum and finances. Asking questions, spot checking, and verifying information is current, accurate, and complete are essential to supervision. It is a common perception that current and former board members have used their position to hire relatives and fire coaches they personally did not like. Why is that kind of involvement acceptable to you, but ensuring the administration to explain and verify programs, ask them too much?